Okay, I'd like to call the meeting order for June 1st, 2022. We'll start with the pledge.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, god, in indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Okay, warrant and bills are all signed up?
Yep.
Okay. Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, minutes of the last meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 25th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, town administration's weekly update.
All right, just a few things, and I'm trying to keep it short for you tonight. One of the policies that we haven't looked at yet is regarding to the excise tax exemption policy, and I just want to read... It echoes from the...
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So the excise tax exemption policy, currently this is designed for any veteran who is being paid at 100%, and that it is indicated on their veteran summary of benefits from the Department of Veteran Affairs. So, a veteran comes in, they're 100% disabled, or they're being paid at 100%, we have a policy that makes them exempt from excise tax. It's just something little that the Town of Acton does for these veterans. The policy indicates that said veteran must be the recipient of a disabled veteran license plate with a class code of DV, or a regular veteran license plate with a class code of VT, from the state of Maine, Town of Acton registration. I have a veteran that has come to me with proof from the Department of Veteran Affairs indicating and proving that he is 100% being paid, however, for his own personal reasons, he would rather keep a passenger PC vehicle. He doesn't want to advertise who he is or what he does, but, you know, he really should be entitled to that same... He's still 100% disabled. He just doesn't want that disabled vet plate on his vehicle. He wants a passenger plate. So I guess the question is, is that, you know, would you consider it? Can we amend the policy so that it's just 100%? You know, it doesn't change how he qualifies, it just changes what he has to... how he advertises it.
I really don't think there's a difference whether or not what the plate is, as long as he shows that he's disabled.
He's 100% disabled.
I was wondering, why do we even have the requirement that they have the plate?
Well, because in the...
If they need to demonstrate they're 100% disabled, that, to me, should be enough.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I think it just kind of, you know, one kind of fell into the other, it was never meant, you know?
Yeah.
If they're... If they want to be exempt from the registration fee that we pay to the state, they have to have a disabled vet plate. So that, we can't waive that. So, that kind of is what tied it, kind of like the Purple Heart plates that we have, same thing. So it just kind of, one went with the other. But, with your permission, we'll make him exempt, he's due to renew his registration, and I'll prepare an amendment... amended policy next week to take out the class code requirement, if that sounds okay?
Fine, will that happen?
I mean, he's still 100%, nothing changed.
So you're going to revise the policy going forward?
Yes.
Okay, great.
That sounds good, thank you. All right. I did send you an email, and you should see it notified by now, that, so Iron Tales Enterprises did come in and apply for their liquor license renewal, like we did the others. We've notified the fire department, the sheriff's department, and we've advertised it accordingly. That will be held at 6 o'clock on next Wednesday. Received an email from the fire chief with a bit of an update on the fire truck that everybody is anxiously waiting for, so, says, "Chief Smith, I wanted to update you. As soon as I heard, I just got word about 15 minutes ago that your chassis has a new estimated completion date of 6/16/2022. I would assume this means the brakes have now arrived at MAC. I have been pinging Rosenberg at a minimum of once a week, trying to get any information I can, but it's been limited. I apologize once again, but we are at the complete mercy of MAC. They're trying to get the measurements for the chassis from MAC, so hopefully we can start building the body soon." So.
I talked to Rick there during the 50-plus-two there celebration, and he told me that the company that puts the body on was doing measurements, getting everything all set, so... But there was something there about the mounts.
About the what?
The mounts on the truck.
Oh, oh.
So, because if they do the mounts, they don't line up right, it's a big deal, so... But he said they're trying to work on the other end of it, to speed up the whole process.
Okay. With the board's approval and the support of staff, we know that we're currently looking for a treasurer, and we're kind of divvying up duties accordingly. Our code enforcement officer has graciously offered to be the direct contact with the handyman and the services that the town hall or town properties need. So essentially, if, you know, if you guys support doing that, we'll still help put the list together, but Robin will essentially meet with Jason once a week, rather than me, to go over things that we've kind of... that we've put together for him to do.
Great.
He doesn't have any supervision over him, he still reports to the board, nothing changes, short of him communicating with Jason on what needs to be done.
Sounds good to me.
Appreciate Jason stepping up and doing that.
You ready to try? It sounds like it'll work.
Last was a couple of more things. One, I sent you an email, but Ron Smith is going to be coming Monday at 8:30 to meet with anybody that... Meet with you guys, if you want to talk to him about where we're kind of going over the next few weeks. I also sent you the email, hoping that you took a look at it, of the documents that they're so graciously waiting for, to be uploaded as individual PDFs. It's only a couple of pages worth. We don't have a date for that yet, but after an executive session tonight, and another situation has come up, I'm hoping to pick back up on this conversation afterwards, but I've got a personnel issue to discuss with you first.
Okay.
Last item is that I had a conversation with Tom regarding public comment, and we wanted to kind of bring it to all... Bring it to you as a group. Currently, you have public comment listed at the end of your agenda. He had some thoughts, and has heard from some people that, you know, maybe, and even he himself, would like to hear from people on different items throughout the agenda. So I was hoping that you could have a conversation about whether or not you would support public comment, maybe on just motion items, maybe... I mean, you'd have to decide what perimeter is, but Tom, you want to give him a little more?
Sure. I think at a minimum that whenever a motion is made, before it's seconded, there could be an opportunity to say "public comment." And people could come, express their point of view, before it is seconded and voted on. I think waiting until the end, at that point, it's moot. The item has already been dealt with, and we've moved on, so there really isn't any value in having... Or people commenting on something that's already been approved, or not been approved, so...
The only thing that I would add is, under Robert's rules, you may want to make a motion, have it seconded. You should be... They should be having a motion seconded, discussion, and then a vote.
Okay.
So, you know what I mean? The discussion piece, whether you guys decide it's amongst you guys, or just you... I mean, you can... The final vote, still...
I'm used to the other way, but I don't really care. It doesn't matter, as long as before the vote, I think.
Right.
If that's Robert's rules, that's fine.
Because if there's never a second, then it doesn't go anywhere anyway. So, but at least second it for the sake of discussion, and then invite the public.
Discussion afterwards.
But... I mean, we have a full house tonight, and it's great. We've got some committees here, and welcome to everyone. But I think if people... I think going along with that, and I know right now is not the time, because you and your staff are pressed with, you know, trying to pick up the responsibilities for the treasurer. But I think we should have the agenda posted in advance of the meeting. People at home can see what's on the agenda, they'll know there's going to be an opportunity for them to comment and contribute to the discussion. Hopefully, that will increase the participation and people coming to the meeting, which is all I'm after.
Yeah, and we have, in the past, posted the agendas, and we certainly can do that. One of the biggest issues, and will, you know, goes on the department heads and the selectmen, is, you know, it's the 5 o'clock, hey, can you throw this on there? It's, you know...
It's a draft. I would label it a draft.
Right, but I'm just saying, we end up adding so much to it, between, you know what I mean? Between the, you know, we'll pick on Will, although he doesn't do this regularly, but he's... I know I can, you know, use him as an example. You know, he may come in and just say, "Can this go on there?" So what ended up happening, and, you know, and not that it's not a good idea, but what ended up happening was, we were getting the complaints that we ended up adding so many items. I'm just saying, I just want you to be aware that it could go either way.
I just think, for instance, if we know we're going to be talking about an issue...
Right.
The rec committee, or the West Shore Drive Bridge.
Yeah.
West Shore Drive Bridge, having that, we knew that.
Right.
Having it on agenda, having it posted, I think is...
A lot of towns have deadlines. I mean, Chapley, when I was a selectman in Chapley, it was 12 o'clock on Friday, period.
Yeah.
It was 12 o'clock on Friday, they didn't add anything.
I think we'd have to do something like that, because even if you did a draft, we'd still get accused of throwing things on, so, you know, if you had a deadline...
Or have a deadline, and just nothing gets added, but you guys got to be ready to answer to, you know, to them.
I would try to... I don't know what the right date is or time.
Right.
I would try to move it to like Monday or something, Monday at noon.
Yeah. Yeah, Chapley met on Tuesday, so we could definitely bump it up some.
Yeah, okay. So, that would be my proposal.
What are the thoughts on public comment, as we go through the items?
I don't have a problem with it. I think it's a good idea. I mean, you know, before we go and vote, people can come up and let us know how they feel.
I mean, we used to do that anyways. That's what we did for a long time. There was a reason why the past select board, that was probably before you came along, they stopped doing it. But I really...
You can try it.
Really, no issue. I don't really have an issue with it, other than it's just going to extend the meetings with it. So it is what it is, you know? So, but, yeah, I mean, if... Do we want to start that immediately? Do we want to...
I would like to.
I mean, something for after the new fiscal year, or what do you want?
That's what I was thinking, after the fiscal year, it's only two weeks away.
That's not July 1st.
I think there are some items on here, for instance...
What do we got?
The Iron Tales, mass gathering, you know, opportunity to comment, the rec committee, the road committee. I think there ought to be opportunities for people... So I would... I'd suggest we do it tonight. I don't think there's anything special that needs to be done to do it, and I think there's some items on the agenda that would be of interest.
All right, and as far as the agenda, so why don't we set a deadline of 12 noon on Tuesdays for our agenda items? And I'll have it posted by the... I mean, it'll be posted by the end of the day Tuesday, so it gives them at least all day Wednesday to look at it. It's not perfect, and not, you know what I mean, but it's 24 hours.
That's great.
So, we'll send out a memo to all the department heads and everybody, 12 noon, unless we deem it an emergency, we won't add anything.
Might make it easier on us, that way there, we can... We don't have any surprises when we come in, and we can get our homework done.
Let me ask another aspect of that. When there's material for the agenda, any reason why that can't be posted as well?
No, I mean, depending... It depends on what it is.
I think if we're going to be talking about an issue, and there's some document that's been developed on that, why not? All of that, you know, just for transparency, just make it available.
Because the board doesn't meet any other time during the week, sometimes these items you're hearing for the first time?
Yeah.
So, you know what I mean? For example, New Bridge Road, at this point, you don't know what the attorney said about how many rod... How many rods it is, so if I post on there the document from the attorney, you know what I mean, the property owner and everybody's going to know before the board of selectmen.
Either before, if it's appropriate, and I know that's a judgment call, but even afterwards, you know, a lot of times, I think we'll take up items, there'll be documents we're looking at, and to the best of my knowledge, they aren't readily available.
No, we're going to need more office staff, I mean, we're just...
And I understand that, Jennifer, I appreciate that's an issue.
But you could possibly do that under like old business stuff?
Mm-hmm.
New business stuff? I don't know how that would work, because like she said, we really ought to see it before, so we can get a...
I'm fine with that, but I just... I think it's good to have these documents out in the public, and as... I suppose people could come in and ask for copies, but might not just make it available.
Yeah, no, it's definitely not that.
I appreciate the workload issue, let's figure out how we can do that.
We need to fill the treasurer's position first.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I got all I can do to put the agenda together, but, makes sense.
So I guess we're going to... You want to change up the format tonight, and do a public comment after each item?
Yeah.
Items, I thought I said items that had motions.
Motion made, seconded.
After motions are made and seconded.
Comments? Anyone has a comment?
So, some of these items won't, you know?
Yeah.
But that will be, because we need to update the website too, so it'll be only on voted items.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
That's all I have, David.
That's all you got? Okay, where are we now? Department head, committee chair updates. 9IC, okay, we're going to go old business, New Bridge Road.
New Bridge Road. Sorry, I just wanted to read you Lukowski's email directly, and I forgot to print it. So, New Bridge Road, as I can find, and, oh, here we go. All right. So we sent staff to the registry and found the original documents for New Bridge, so that will go in the file. "Hi Jennifer, New Bridge Road was laid out as a three-rod road, meaning the right-of-way extends 24 feet on each side of the center line." So, what that means is, so we know that that fence is approximately 16 feet from the center of line.
16.
"It is not an enforcement issue for code enforcement, because it is, at this point, trespassing, if you will, on the town's right-of-way. So it is not a code enforcement office issue, please do not call Jason. This is a selectmen issue, and the advice from your attorney is twofold. One, check with the road commissioner and see if he believes it's going to be an issue with plowing. Secondly, if the board deems that they decide to allow him to leave it there, he recommends that you allow him to draft an agreement, if you will, or a release, basically saying that if anything happens in the winter with plowing, then, you know, the town in no way is liable."
Yeah, that was a concern I had with it, because as close as the road is, no doubt that we...
Nobody has reached out to the property owner at this point to tell him this 24. I mean, my job is to report to you first, unfortunately, the meetings are filmed.
What issue come up?
The issue came up originally because someone posted on Facebook, I believe, that they were taking away someone's view. Certainly, the town didn't get involved in that piece, but it triggered phone calls to the town hall, so they started calling the road commissioner, and then they started calling the code officer, who, which both essentially came to me and said...
Is it a lake view, or mountain view?
Yeah, but it's on his pri... Yes. He's... So this is what I've been told from the code officer, is that the gentleman's been speaking to him, the property owner's been speaking to him about putting this fence up for some time. There's a dock down there.
Ah, I see.
He's constantly finding trash, and needles, and cans, and his property's being trashed from just random people down there, hanging out on his property. So he went and talked to Jason about a fence. Fences are not permissible items in the shoreland. He didn't need a fence for it, so that got that department out of it. So it was just a matter of the road and how wide the easement was. So, something to think about, you don't need to do anything tonight. I'm going to ask you to go down and take a look at it, and talk to your road commissioner on that side, and we'll put it on next week's agenda.
Is that Will?
That's Adam.
I know...
Yes?
After this all went...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, William. Come on, my apologies. We'll plow it in the wintertime.
Oh, well, yeah.
Adam's the only one...
Right, so, yeah.
Adam's the only one that spoke to me. Okay, you want to take a ride too?
I'd ask you to look at it.
Okay. I'm sorry, Adam's been calling me about it, and I didn't even check my list, so... We'll have both of the gentlemen look at it, you'll get two opinions next week, and we'll go from there.
But I went up and took a look at it the other day, because originally, we thought it was a two-rod, and, so he was 16 and a half feet off the center of the road, and when you do that, it's not very far from the hot top to the fence, and as we learned, there's no permit, and no nothing saying how far it has to be off the edge of the road. And it might be something we want to look at later on down the road, some sort of ordinance or whatever, that, you know, at least put, you know, hey, you're going to have it eight feet off the edge of hot top, just because for the plowing aspect of it, or something like that. Might be food for thought.
Okay.
Okay, where are we now? Are we all set with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to go with B siding.
All right. So the siding, we left off last week, reviewing the two bids that we got. We know that one came in a lot higher than the other one. There is a little over $30,000 in that fund, $30,575. We could use building maintenance money to replace some of the boards and trim, because that's not siding, it's the boards and so forth. So, there is some wiggle room, as long as the siding piece of it doesn't go over the $30,575, which I don't think it would, the contract was only for $29,000. I was hoping, in an effort to move on this, that we can either have Jason, I thought we could either invite the contractor out here to sit down and go over it with the code officer, compare our document to his, and see if we can make sure that they're talking well to one another, and maybe vote on it as early as next week.
Have you had some thoughts on this, have you?
I did, but I also wanted to recuse myself, but I'm happy to... I'm happy to share them, but...
Yeah, I mean...
Share your... I mean, yeah.
Seeing it was the only bid that we got...
But it wasn't, we got a... No offense, but we did get two. I mean, because the other option, you could just not to, you know, but you could go out and ask for more money if you liked the other bid, but...
Well, putting aside who we award the bid to...
Right.
Just looking at this issue of, we have limited amount of money, the scope of the work could expand because of rotten conditions, or rot in the... underneath the clad boards, correct?
Correct.
Or around the windows.
Correct.
From what I understand, inflation on siding, and the material is going through the roof, I would suggest that we, at a minimum, make sure the contractor buys all the material, and he leaves it here. And we use what we have as available money as a "not to exceed," and we do it, as I think you were suggesting, David, in sections.
Yeah.
And if we can get through the whole thing?
That's... What I was trying to get to is the way we were going to set up the contract with him, because his contract and our contract are different.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what I was talking about.
The legal piece of the contract. The legal, remember the signature lines?
I personally never use... I don't like using vendor contracts.
Right.
I think we have our own contract form, we had a bid document, they ought to comply with it, and they had... Now, if they have a need for additional provisions, they could put together an addendum that we could choose to accept or not. But I would not use a vendor's contract.
So why don't I spend the next week trying to get theirs converted to our documents?
Well, no, no, but, I mean, you had a good point, but at the same time, when we do that, if we can convert that from their contract to our contract, maybe have them split it up in sections for us?
Yeah.
That way there, we can have them start a section, and obviously, if it turns into a bomb out back there, and, you know, the thing's all rotted out, then we know what each section's going to cost, that we can at least budget.
And remember, the woods, you can pay out of building maintenance, so we might still be okay, so...
So we would be able to.
But I just feel that by having them...
It's a good idea, you know, start out and work our way.
We start out with a big section, because we've got the smaller ones, and just see how far we run with it. If we come into some major stuff, then we figure it out.
All right, I would love...
Is there a possibility for a motion in here that would allow for those discussions and fine tuning to take place, but move this project along?
Well, don't you want to make sure that, I mean, make sure that he's going to... He'll abide to switching it over to your contract first? I mean, we're not still accepting bids, so I don't think anything's going to change.
Yeah, I don't want to step into this, but we don't want to lose this at this price, given what we had for other bids.
Right.
But I think what we really have to get the contract converted over to what we need before we can actually do it, so, one week, if we... I think he should be able to get it back to us in a week.
I will call him when the meeting's over, if you want.
That'd be great.
I'll move on as quick as I can, Tom.
I'm sure you will.
Okay. That's all I have on that.
Okay, now to do... Excuse me. Uh, new business, Iron Tales Mass Gathering Permit.
So Mr. Martinez, I believe I saw who is here tonight. So, come on up. He is... So you've got a document that you have, and I'm just going to read sections of it aloud for the public, and make sure that we're all on the same page, on mass gathering permits and the requirements. So, it says, "Selectment of the Town of Acton. Below, I've listed dates and descriptions of my requested mass gathering permits. I have described the events and the reason why it may require a mass gathering permit. I've also attached my certificate of insurance. I'm confident the board is familiar with the operation. Access grounds, water supply, sanitation is on a consistent basis. Porta-potties are added to the property, and additional trash cans around the facility. Sound may exceed the allowable range according to the ordinance at the property line for a short time." So he's got the dates listed there. So, by ordinance, you have to have a mass gathering permit for any event over 250 people, okay? So he's got Saturday, June 12th, Saturday, June 18th, Sunday, the 25th, July 22nd, July 29th, August 17th, September 3rd, and September 16th. So the big question to you, Greg, to start, is how... I mean, how close to these numbers are you going to get, to 250? Do you have any... I mean, how do you gauge that?
Well, just from the musical performances that are the lion's share of the dates, are that's... I don't expect to do 250, but the first two events that come up, I feel fairly confident I will exceed the 250. The first, the double back-to-back veterans event on the 12th, it's a Sunday, and there's a lot of press out there, and, you know, it's involving, you know, Harley-Davidson Corporation, and the VFW nationwide, and it's some pretty big sponsorship behind it. So, for that, I have contracted with Fairgrounds across the street for auto parking across the street to hand, you know, to keep people off the roadways for that, and then the 18th is the burnout competition, which is the end of bike week, and it's a busy day for us anyway, but the burnout competition does bring a lot of extra bodies. And on that same note, you know, I will have auto parking across the street as well, because I have it under agreement with the Fairgrounds.
Both of those end at 5 o'clock? Both those events end at 5?
Yes. Yeah.
And those are the only two that you're thinking there's going to be more than 250?
Yeah.
The rest of this list is just...
Heads up?
Yeah. Just at the... Nighttime music. The musical performances outside, I am... With the planning board, I have an agreement with the planning board that there would be no outdoor music after 5:00 PM. And when I did do that, I would need to find, you know, bring it to this board...
Right.
...to get a permit to do that.
And there were steps you took, like building a fence, right?
Yeah.
And stuff.
Yeah, got that.
Since then, okay.
And, you know, sound, sound areas ready to roll, you know, for those, even events to be certain that I do not exceed the allowable sound levels that the ordinance provides. I've had my property line marked off and everything, while we're taking readings.
Any questions? Well.
Tom's going to have to make a motion. I'm going to recuse myself.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the.
Mask gathering.
The mask gathering provisions for the events on June 12th and June 18th.
No. Are we going to, are we going to do the rest of them also in the same motion?
Well, I mean, he's, that's up to you. He's only expecting the, he's expecting the exceeded numbers on the first two, but the rest of them, the planning board says he has to come before you for music after 5:00.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'll make a separate motion for that.
You could make them two separate motions.
So let's, let's take up the first two.
Yeah.
Motion's been made.
I'll second the motion. Public comment?
Good job, David.
I think it's interesting.
Oh, you got it. Oh, you got to come up.
No free lunch here.
Can we make everybody do it, not just you?
Well, I wanted to address this gentleman. So I'm Hope Denne Camp, and I'm on 13th Street, and I'm grateful to have this opportunity just to know what's going on. I think the Iron Tails is a terrific neighbor. We're not seeing any issues. Maybe these are big events, and we hear the motorcycles a lot, but I just think this is, this is something that people along Milton Mills might have liked to know beforehand, so that they can have some input as well. So going back to your comment, the public comment, this, I think, is the way to do it. I support the, the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie Berlin. I'd like to speak in favor also of Greg being allowed to have these events. You know, I am speaking as an employee, and, and even if I wasn't an employee, I would recommend that. I've seen an awful lot of fundraisers come through, Iron Tails, ton, I would say, tens of thousands of dollars each summer is raised for our veterans and for people who find themselves in unfortunate circumstances. And the generosity that comes out of that building is, is just astonishing at times. And, and anything that the town can do to support that, I think, is worthwhile.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Sam Singleton. I definitely also agree, and I want to speak for him, being able to do it, just in the fact that I've got two little kids, and we go back and forth, we've never had any issues there. He's got all the signs plastered because they, you know, he's having issues with people wanting to do burnouts, so it was being disrespectful towards him as a business owner, and he's been trying to do right, do right by everybody. He also helps the Acton PTG. I believe he also put on an event for Bonn's Ride, which is another fundraiser for a summit that happened with a resident here in Acton. So I think with everything that he's done in the past, everything that he continues to do, and the professionalism that he shows, and everything that he gives, I think it's a great time, and it also attracts more people to the area. I know we have a lot of people coming in anyways, but tourists equal revenue, so.
Anybody else? I don't see any more public comments, so the motion's been made. You'll see, vote, all in favor?
Okay.
Like to make a motion that the proposed dates of June 25th, July 22nd, July 29th, August 17th, September 3rd, and September 16th, be authorized to have music after 5:00. And, so, that's the motion.
Okay. That is done by 10:00 also.
And, okay.
Done by 10:00 P.M.
Thank you. So amended.
Second the motion. I'll second the motion. Any public, any public comment on this part of it?
I, I would just like to comment, I, I get almost emotional, and I'm, and I'm kidding, because I, I really appreciate the support that I get from this town. It's pretty fantastic. And any of, out there in TV land, if you haven't been in, please come in, because it's a wonderful place, full of wonderful people. It is not anything what you might, may think, or what you saw on TV or anything like that. It's like a community center. I've got some great, great people that work there, and, and like I said, this town has been absolutely fantastic, standing behind me, because sometimes what we do is a little bit crazy, and a little bit off the beaten path to some folks' lifestyles, but there's all kinds of ways to enjoy yourself. And I, I hope you all take an opportunity to definitely stop in and visit us, and I appreciate the support. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, don't see any. All in favor?
There you go. Okay, would you like me to take this one?
I'm sorry, my alphabet is off, I'm sorry.
Okay, oh yeah, I didn't notice that. Okay, we're going to go Rec, Recreational Committee.
Great. Well, the Rec Committee has been asked here tonight. It looks like we have just about the whole committee. If I could ask you to come to the microphone, and.
Introduce themselves?
Really, what we would like to, in, in a minute, Sam, ask if you or if you all can introduce yourselves, that would be great. What we wanted to do was just, given it's a, it's a relatively new committee that's been formed, if you have any questions, or if there's any comments you'd like to make, this would be a great time to do it. We have also, I think you've all seen a draft of the sort of responsibilities of the committee, and the relationship of the committee to the ethnic director, that tries to lay that all out for everyone, so there's clarity. So open it up for comment. If you could, though, introduce yourself, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sam Singleton. I am the director for the Acton recreational group. Mom to two girls, and we've been working on baseball season so far, opening the snack shack, we're getting that open every weekend, every Saturday, and we're currently looking at the next steps of what to offer. Actually, I wouldn't mind getting some feedback, too. We're looking at doing a soccer clinic, and I was kind of hoping that maybe somebody would have some feedback on it. Was that idea?
And before you go on to the next committee, just to clarify what, what, something that Tom said, so remember, because the Rec Committee hasn't had an actual meeting yet, so the committee has not seen this list. We're going over with them tonight.
Oh, I see, okay.
So they don't know what's on here?
Why don't I review that?
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you. Now I get it.
We wanted the board to see it, the director to see it, and then the.
This is a team effort.
Yes.
So we've, we've drafted with Sam and, and the Selectmen, just a, a brief list of items that would sort of describe what that role is of the Rec Committee. And I think this is somewhat of a change from the way it's been done in the past, but now that we have a, a Rec Director, we felt that the role of the committee ought to be adjusted to sort of fit with the role of the Rec Director.
Probably let them all go announce themselves first, then we'll get into that, so they know what they're doing.
Okay, sure.
I will say, there is another member, she's not feeling quite well, so she's kind of, she's kind of hanging back with Lori this year as well.
Oh, Lori.
So she's not forgotten.
I didn't see her back there. Okay.
John Denne Camp, first year at Towne, and, you know, excited to be working with Sam. And got into coaching baseball this year, at, you know, the insistence of a couple of people. Having a lot of fun with it. And I want to make the board aware of something that one of your members did. So a couple of weeks ago, the Winchell Brothers, on their day off, brought a tractor over to the field, the power rig, and did the infield over. So it's now just about good as new, and the kids appreciate it, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you, David.
I gotta, I gotta kick out of the post, because.
I'm going to tag you.
My, my brother's name's Harvey, and the rake that I use is a Harley rake, so you called it a Harvey rake, and we're going to kick out of that. Harley rake. Oh, he, he had a rake, but.
I tried so hard to tag you, and I could not tag you, no matter what I did. The comment, nothing, I'm like, fine.
That's fine.
I'd be lucky hitting you up again to see if you want to come again. There you go.
Crystal Andrews, and my son Russell is in kindergarten. We just moved here about five years ago, with my stepdad, Lon Howland, and my mom, Christine, loving on her. And I just absolutely love this community and everything that they do, and so, thank you for letting me join. Well, you all know me. And what we're trying to do is just to kind of, you know, revitalize the Rec Committee a little bit, I think, with COVID and a lot of other obstacles. It's, I don't want to say been neglected, but I think it just needs some work, so we're here to bring some new life into it. And I don't know if you've noticed, but we've got a whole bunch of new little Tikes toys that we've been soliciting from neighbors, and two of the three little sets came from folks here in Acton, and I thought it might be nice if you guys signed a thank you note that I'll write them. I guess I've been charged with the snack shack, so. Good or bad, like Crystal said, no negative comments, but that's how we learn, we learn from negative comments. So we want to know what we're doing right, what we're not doing right. We're not the kids, so we want the kids to know that they can come to us and tell us what they're looking for.
That's nice.
Thank you. Do I approach?
Please. No formality here. Thank you.
I am Jennifer Doms.
I'm TJ Doms. I'm married to this lovely young lady.
Aww.
Two boys, soon to be eight and then nine years old, that are, just recently moved here last year, and so just wanted to publicly thank Lori and other members that have been holding it together through COVID. And just happy to be here and see how we can contribute, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Carol Ward. I've been on the Rec Committee and got roped into it because I wanted swimming.
And we did, you did, you did excellent with the swimming.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Great.
Carol has been one of the ones behind the scenes that has done so much with Lori, behind the scenes. I don't realize how much she did when it was just the two of them, so, thank you for that. Yeah, they pulled off a lot.
One thing we're, we're holding together, one they were doing, and, but, you know, some things weren't probably where they wanted it to be, other things were, but we also were, with the COVID, and.
All right, Tom, see all these new people.
Let me review, there are five items that sort of summarize the, the role of the committee. The first is to serve as an advisory committee to the recreational director and the Select Board. So you have a, an opportunity to bring forth all these great ideas, and I think Sam will be the principal contact person for, for much of that, but usually when it involves money, she'll come to the Select Board. So that's how that process will work. Gather ideas for events to present to the full committee. Assist in organizing events. Volunteer when necessary at the snack bar, field, field cleanup days, et cetera, and assist in fundraising efforts. If there are other items or points of clarification any of you might have, we'd be happy to talk about those.
I was interested in how we wanted to approach maybe playing other towns in sports, and if that's on the docket, or if I'm going to play in some, or playing.
It's something that we'll probably be talking about on Sunday, it's something we're definitely working on. So, yes, it's definitely a goal. I don't want us to just be playing, one of the comments that I've gotten from a lot of kids is they don't want to just play.
Say, yeah.
One of the comments I've gotten from a lot of kids is they don't want to just play against their teammates, essentially, and that's, that's what it is. Whether we have enough kids to create two or three teams, they're still playing against their teammates, everybody that they're practicing with. They really want to work on playing games against other towns. So one of the top things that I want to get us done for this year, so that we were established next year, is become Little League sanctioned. I would love us to be able to play baseball games against other towns, especially with the size of our pre-KK team, our T-ball team, there's 23 kids on that team this year.
Wow.
Wow.
So knowing that some of those are kindergarten, they're going up to the next grade, and they've got the other ones coming in, it's, it's going to be huge.
That's correct.
I've been briefly chatting with a gentleman who does, he's an instructor in that for soccer, he's actually certified in everything, been talking with him about doing clinics, and he's going to be working closely with Berwick. So we're kind of maybe toying with the idea of trying to do a, a friendlies-type deal between us, Shatley, and Berwick, so that we'll be able to do some soccer, soccer games going back and forth, because as a parent and as a, a previous Rec kid, one of the best things to do is to expand by seeing how other teams play. Because what you do in your town might be completely different of another town, so it'd be nice to kind of merge it all.
Sounds like you're going to have a lot of, like, a lot of agenda items for the first meeting. That's a great, a great point, TJ. Maybe you can put this, this, these duties on the agenda, since, since it's the first time they heard it, maybe you guys can talk about it as a roundtable on Sunday. Add to it, and let the board review it, and we can, you know, revamp it for you and re-present it, if the board agrees with it. You guys are awesome.
Thank you very much for the work you're doing.
Yes.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you for stepping forward.
I know by the Select Board and also by the community. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Okay. All signed in. Okay, next up, Road Committee.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Ward, I think he's back there.
That would be good.
Come on up, Jay.
All Rec Committee members.
You want to do an introduction of that, and I'll kind of recap what brought us here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't we do that?
Leslie, want to introduce your team?
Okay, I'm Leslie Berlin, Rec Committee Chair.
Hold on a sec.
All right, I'm Vice Chairman.
Hold on, hold on a second, Will.
Yeah, we're. All right.
There you go.
Well, Langley, member of the Road Committee.
And I'm Dave Ward.
So I think we're missing just one Road Commissioner. I know Adam was picking up something in Mass, so he was running late, and you have just one other member? And he couldn't make it, okay.
And I didn't hear from Rick.
Okay. So this kind of stemmed, I think, originally, last week I mentioned at the meeting that you had come into the office, and we had had a conversation about maybe what the next step was. You mentioned having a meeting about West Shore Drive and bringing in some of the agencies or maybe some of the, the property owners, and we just kind of had a small conversation about that.
Okay, well, yeah, I, I contacted the engineer, her name is Maureen.
Yeah, it's not that.
Beginning of last week.
Yep.
And all of you should have received a copy of the, of that email documentation. So I had, I told her that we were looking for three different sketch plans with cost estimates, and that I asked for a time estimate as to when we could expect those. She said that it, the design engineer was, was starting that work this week. So, other than that. And then as where we move forward, there, that process is actually outlined in the contract that was signed, and it, they called it a kickoff meeting, which is basically what Jennifer, what we spoke about.
Mm-hmm.
Is to have a meeting with all the stakeholders, and then once that stakeholder meeting takes place, the Road Committee will make their recommendation.
Who are the stakeholders?
Stakeholder, well, according to, according to the contract, the stakeholder, they're presumed to be the Acton Road Commissioner, Inland Fisheries, Square Pond Improvement Association.
It, that's, it lists them as a definition of that's who they are? I'm sorry, I don't have the contract in front of me.
Those are the presumed stakeholders.
That's the wording in there?
That is the wording. I can read it verbatim if you.
Yeah, no, can I just take a peek at it while you're chatting? I just wanted to look at one other thing on the contract. I'm sorry, I don't have my copy here. I think in, and I think some of the conversation that, that the board was kind of leaning towards was where the conversation, where kind of the separation between yourself as the chair and, and Mr. Langley, kind of, who was, I don't want to say leading the, you know, who was really communicating with them? We were kind of getting, you know, was it one of you, was it both of you? You know, we want to make sure that everybody understood their roles and what part of the committee, you know, if they were, if they knew all the steps that were going along. I just wanted to read that.
I think we were, we were wondering about the, there was supposed to be a meeting gathering with the Square Pond Association and this and that.
I mean, that's, like I said, it was delineated in the contract that was signed on the slide.
It does say presumed, though, it doesn't.
What's the agenda for that meeting? What do you, what's your goal for that meeting? That kickoff meeting? What are you trying to achieve there?
I, I would, well, I would presume the goal would be to look at, at the three proposals, talk about pros and cons of, of all three, and, and do the information gathering that we need in order to make a decision as to what, what we would suggest putting, putting forth.
And you take into consideration what they, you know, tell you, what they're, how they feel?
Well, the engineer is going to have specific reasons as to why.
Right, but you said there's going to be three different ones, so, I mean, you're inviting like Square Pond in, what, you know, what I'm saying is, is what if they all say, this is the one we want? I, I guess is.
But see, but, I mean, we have, we have different agencies that want different things.
Okay.
I mean, Square Pond Association wants one thing, Inland Fisheries could want something entirely different, so there has to be a meeting of the minds somewhere in the middle.
There should be a public hearing.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Absolutely, it should be public.
This is a, this is a hot issue, as I'm sure you know. And with, with the various interest groups that we have, with sort of different interest, I'm trying to understand how that gets, how that gets synthesized.
I think, I think.
To arrive at something that represents what are the best interests of the town and of the, of the residents on Square Pond.
With the cravat, that, it has to, it has to meet the regulations that are required.
Of course, of course it does.
I mean, it's.
And we know that.
One thing that the, that the state and the feds are going to say, absolutely not. You don't know.
You know, it, I, I, I guess I approach it that, being a little cautious and skeptical, You know, I guess I approach it that being a little cautious and skeptical, that everyone's got an agenda here. They've got their interest. And I'm trying to understand how that's going to get brought together.
I don't, Tom?
Well, but if you bring every, what I've seen is if you bring everyone together, and if you just kind of let that in a free-flowing discussion go, that can go well, that can not go well also. And so, I think it's really important to understand what the strategy is for how, how we're going to represent the town's interest, the residents' interest on that lake, while also respecting the state and the federal government's authority. Having, having been at a number of meetings, not a number, but a few of the meetings with those agencies, it was pretty clear, they said, a replacement was not, was not permissible. And then, we bring in, actually, Square Pond brings in their own engineer and says, you know, you can do a replacement under these conditions. And I think it was Army Corps said, yeah, you can. But they didn't offer that. And I guess that's, I guess that's my point, is that you can't rely on them necessarily to bring forth what may be a preferred outcome for Acton. And so, I just want to make sure that we, that we have the right advice and information along the way so that we get to the place that everyone understands why we got there.
I understand that, Tom. One of the things we've asked for is a sketch design for an in-kind replacement.
Yeah.
We've asked for that. I mean, it's, until we have the sketch plan.
So, you've asked for it, so we know we're going to be getting that.
I mean, it's, there could be a cost differential that's astronomical to replace it in kind. We don't know. I mean, until we.
It could be the cheapest. It could be the cheapest.
Well, I would, I would think it would be the cheapest.
But then, then you run into, can you get the permitting in place?
I'm talking about process. That's what concerns me. When you have many different interests, which is what we have here, and some of them have a great deal of authority behind them. I'm talking about the state and federal agencies. They have a great deal of authority that it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we have whatever resource, information, expertise we need to advance Acton's interest as best we can. And we may come to a point where we say, eh, replacement just can't be done. But I'm not there yet, and I don't think people on Square Pond are necessarily there yet either.
All right. Tom, and I, and I understand exactly what you're saying. We don't have all of the information gathered yet.
Yeah.
When this meeting happens, what needs, what needs, everyone who comes to it and speaks needs to understand is we need to be respectful. We need to hear what the other people are saying and understand what, why things are being presented the way they are.
Before you do this meeting, though, don't you think that your committee and us three here should get together and see what you've gotten stuff before we bring everybody in?
I agree with that.
You know, just, I mean, I would like to see it.
The sketches. You're going to see it anyway.
Well, that's, but I would like to see it. I mean.
So, ransom is going to give, ransom should only be giving, based on that same contract that she references, Will is listed as the contact through ransom. So, those sketches should be coming to you, correct? So, and the idea, I mean, the direction you gave Will, I think in one of the last couple of meetings, is that he was to bring them to the board.
That's right.
And then maybe we can have a joint meeting, and then do the kickoff, I think is what they're kind of hoping for.
Yeah, just get together so we're all on the same page before you go ahead and do, you know. And should that, should also, this meeting that you want to do, should we just have a public meeting on it?
Well, that's what I was just going to say. I mean, I feel that with a hot subject like this here, I don't think this is something where the road committee should be having their own public hearing on this. I think this should be a.
All of us here together, all of us. Dave, we've already brought in all of them.
Well, I understand that. I understand that, okay?
They have been very productive meetings where everyone had the opportunity to stay with them.
Leslie, we haven't even got a design yet. So, when we get a design, okay, we look at the design, the road committee can or whatever, after we look at it, then we can schedule a meeting with all of us, okay, and have a public hearing with them invited, everybody invited. Because it's not just people on Square Pond that this is an interest. This is town-wide. Unfortunately, you're putting it out just for Square Pond. This is a taxpayer issue, okay? And there's a lot of, and there's a lot of people that have their reasoning for what they want over there, and they don't even have to live there. So, you know, when we get these plans, I believe we should be setting a meeting for this, and.
I think we want to be prepared.
Yeah.
We want to be prepared for this.
They wanted to send out notices to the abutters. So, our interactive maps have the rights. So, we'll do the, we'll do a butters within so many feet, but then advertise it like any other public hearing, you know, make sure it hits the newspaper, make sure it hits the internet, make sure it hits cable and Facebook, all the places, because they are hearing from other people other than just Westshore Drive residents.
Right. I understand that. And Tom and I had a conversation just last week where I expressed the very same thing. Didn't we, didn't I say that, Tom? That it's not just a Square Pond issue, that the tax, the whole town will be voting on and spending these funds for this?
Yeah, let me say something. Let there not be any misunderstanding. I appreciate the work that the road committee and the road commissioner has done on this. You've been at this for a long time.
Yes.
And this is not, personally, for me, this is, I don't have any issue per se with what you're doing. I just want to make sure that, at the end of the day, because I hear a lot from people about this project. They know I'm a selectman, they come to me on it. There's a lot of interest. I just want to make sure, at the end of the day, whatever we end up with, people understand why, and they understand, and they, and they know that that was an open process, and that we had the best information we could have in making the right decision. That's my only interest here.
And I believe that the road committee has given the public a forum to express their opinions and to participate that. We've brought Army Corps in twice.
How would the public know, though? I guess it was, I mean, kind of goes back to us not posting our agendas. I mean, how would the rest of the town know that the road committee is discussing those things at meetings? When you say that we've given them the opportunity, what can we say? What, how has that happened?
Well, it's, you know.
They don't.
Well, no, and I'm not trying to, I'm not questioning you. I'm just trying to figure out.
That's why we're talking now. How do we answer this now?
Right. How have you done, you've said that you've given, the road committee has given a forum. How have we advertised that we've done that? So that, do you know what I mean?
They could attend road committee meetings, which.
So, it's pretty much on every, it's on every agenda?
On half of the attendance.
Right, just Square Pond.
Probably has been.
It's been on every agenda.
People, I mean, people don't show up. They don't show up. I mean, the meetings are announced every single, every single week at your meeting. They're announced when they are. And if they choose to not show up, or if they choose to not watch them later, I mean, I don't see how we can fix that.
I, I also want to respect the role of the road committee here. But in the final analysis, if there are unhappy parties, it's going to end up here. Because the selectmen ultimately make this decision.
And you're right. We make a recommendation. We do not make the decision. You're right.
We just want to be involved in this process so that we can, you know, properly represent that to the community and stand behind whatever decision is made, and explain it to people so, in an open way, that, you know, they get it. They understand it as best they can.
And if the public wants to see what Army Corps said on one meeting that he was here that was recorded, it was October 12th of last year, I've recommended that my whole committee go back and re-watch that. I re-watched that several times. I would recommend that you all watch that again. Because I don't believe we had a selectman at that meeting.
So, your point is?
My point is, it's, he gave some valuable information that, I mean, I picked up a couple of things that I had not caught and not heard.
It's a good thing to watch. I've watched it.
I mean, like I said, I watched it several times because each time I caught something a little different that I hadn't thought about or I didn't remember. So, I would certainly recommend watching that again. And anyway.
So, where do we go from here?
The contract that was signed.
Well, I think at this point, right now, what we want to do is wait for these sketches to come in. Will's going to give them to us. We'll go over them. I guess we could probably put it out to the road committee, obviously afterwards, but before we have any big meetings, so we don't have to, you know, because most people aren't going to road committee meetings because they, you know, they're more likely to come to a public hearing put on by us. So, we don't have to worry about the people who don't show up because they didn't see it, because it's going to be posted all over the place. So, what we'll do is, we get the designs, the three designs. Obviously, we still continue doing some homework and see whether or not we can still do in-kind, which I don't believe the engineering company would design one if we couldn't. But this is what they do. But after we get the designs that come here, we hand it over to the road committee after we look at it, and then we'll set a date for a public hearing.
Sounds like a plan.
So, that public hearing would be with Army Corps and Inland Fisheries also.
We'll invite them.
Everybody. Let us know who should be here.
And the engineer, because the engineer was going to.
Because they can answer the questions better than any of us.
That's why you have a public hearing, so the public can actually talk to people who are supposed to be informed on this. And we want it coming from the horse's mouth. So, and we want everybody to hear it. That way, there, we're not the ones getting run over. Because when, when somebody from a road committee or any committee goes and says, oh, we're going to do this, when nothing's been approved, it comes at us. And we've gotten those phone calls already. So, we want to make sure that we go step by step by step and make sure that everybody's accountable.
And we all work together, too.
Yeah. Well, exactly.
You know, so we know what's going on.
There's no issue with that, right?
No.
Okay.
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I didn't really see it going any other way. I'm fine with that. I mean, I think it needs to go that way. We had an issue a couple of years ago, and I think that people have given us some more trust, and I don't believe that trust. If we lose it again, I think we're going to have a big issue.
Yeah, we don't want that.
More we can advertise it, the better, right?
I think if we do that, if we do everybody we need here, I don't, I don't see what we're going to have.
Have they given you any idea of when you might get those sketches?
No, she just said they were starting.
This is a project for like next summer, in terms of a timeline?
At this point, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Just, yeah. Not going to happen this year.
No, it wasn't a miracle.
I would think it would be almost impossible at this point. You don't want to have that run into the winter time.
Yeah. Okay.
I just want to take a step back and go back to the canal bridge, because it came in at a 66. Four of the issues listed that were safety issues, and to me, that goes to liability issues to the town. The other issue I noticed was bank slump. Now, that's a DEP issue. We have to address these, and now probably is the time to do it. When I reviewed the presentation from M A Bean, he has insurance. So, if there are costs, but it needs to, the safety issues and the bank slump do need to be addressed. And perhaps this should be a meeting we have with the selectmen again, too. I'm trying to find a copy of the final certified engineering design for it. The final design I got is here. And the DEP questions are, because I haven't found an erosion control permit there that was issued to anything. I have before and after pictures of the bridge here that show what's been brought in on the side. There should have been a permit for anything over a yard because it's within 75 foot of the water.
We talked about this.
We did talk about.
Yeah, I went out to that site with you, and I, and we talked about these issues. And I'm not, to be honest with you, I don't know what your objective is, in that if, if things, if the proper permit wasn't pulled or whatever, not to make light of that, but at this point, the bridge is in. And I don't think there was anything criminal done. So, I don't understand what action could be taken to address those points that you're raising.
Well, I think that we've got to at least make an opportunity to repair the guardrails, which are the issues on the safety. You've got a canal that's 16 feet deep and 13 feet wide. One of the issues listed was the height of the railing. I went out and measured it. It was 33 inches high. Now, I'm, I couldn't find out what a bridge railing is supposed to be. But on regular, like, regular railings on a deck, they have to be 36. That may be one of the things.
It was right in the contract that it was up to federal standards, the guardrails. It's right on the contract.
Do we have all the final contracts? Because the road committee, I don't believe.
I thought we were asking DEP to come out and take a look at the bridge.
We did reach out to them.
DEP's been offered that so many times.
And the point is, look, the building, the bridge is done. But if there's something there that needs to be addressed, then we ought to know what that is. And I think the point was to go to DEP, and what you've done, and ask them to come out and take a look at it. And if there are issues that need to be addressed, then bring them to the town, and we'll figure that out.
I believe we had Mr. Foster coming.
Well, that's where we had the conversations with the Bridge Ranger. Remember, we had that meeting with the Bridge Ranger. They have been contacted, as far as I know. I don't know that they've gone and looked at it, but we did make the request to them.
As far as I know, DEP has been called, I think, five or six different times during that whole project. Mrs. Hart has called five or six times on the same issues, and they've come out and checked those issues out. There was no issues then, and it seems to be a continuous issue. I went up, looked at it. It's fine. I, myself personally, who is DEP certified for erosion control, I went up to make sure they put their erosion control up. I explained to them how to do it myself. So, I'll take that one, take the map for that one.
Who did put up that self-check?
Well, originally, Mr. Bean did. It wasn't installed correctly. I had our road commissioner go up and do so. There were bales of hay put down. Everything was stabilized. They hated. It was fine. We can call DEP again, Cindy. I just don't understand. It's vegetated. Everything is.
A 66 on a brand-new bridge.
And we're, that's why we got the Bridge Ranger.
Bridge Ranger.
Bridge Ranger coming down, because there's something wrong there. We don't understand.
And will he meet with the road committee also and go over these? Because if it's a liability issue, I feel it has to be addressed.
I think that.
That's all I have to say.
I think the road commissioner and the liaison could probably take care of that at this point.
You do have a final certified engineering drawing, correct, that's been, that's on record here?
We do have a draw, and he did give us. I remember that.
Are they certified, a final certified?
Which, I'm still trying to figure out, I'm sorry to press this, but this is not my area of expertise. But it's in. We paid for it. It's functioning. Whether we had an engineering stamp on the drawings or not, at this point, it's moved. It's been done. I'm not quite sure what your objective is, Cindy.
Shatley's doing the same bridge right now.
Repairs need to be made. We have to find out who should pay for them.
If what?
If repairs have to be made because of safety issues.
What repairs have to be made, Cindy?
Did you, well, you read the report. There are four different safety issues listed on that report. Now, shouldn't they be addressed?
And what were the issues?
Guardrails.
So, the guardrail's not, that was.
The guard, the guard, the height of the guardrail was listed. Both ends of it were listed as a problem. There was a fourth thing on there. And then, the bank slump, which needs to be addressed because it's directly next to that, directly next to that canal. And also, the reason I asked for the engineered drawing is because we need to find out whether a soil test was done to establish whether or not what we put in would sink. It's almost directly over the old bridge, which is on the National Historic Registry. And we'd hate to see that damaged and have to repair that. So, if something needs to be done, it should be done right away.
Well, that's why we're having the Bridge Ranger coming down.
Right. I feel like there was something, because I did have a conversation. What was the date of the inspection versus the date of the completion?
Right.
Do you have the bridge report in front of you? Because I didn't know we were going to talk about this room.
No, I don't. But I'll leave these to you. This is the final drawing I, we have.
We do have certified copies. I can pull them. Had I known, I would have pulled the file for you.
I think they came out to do the bridge before it was completed.
Could they have inspected it before the job was done?
Right. And that's what we would think. And so, that's why we're having it back down.
Well, I do get, I get it. I know exactly what this is all about. And what this is all about was, we, Mrs. Hart, you wanted the bridge done for how many years? 10, 12 years?
Well, you got it on the National Registry 10 years ago. We've been trying to get anybody to address it.
Okay, and the National Registry hasn't worked out, has it?
Pardon?
It never worked out, did it? Because I remember being in those meetings where they, and I remember being at a meeting saying, do not put it on the registry, because you put it on the registry, you can't touch it. So, then you guys get it on the registry, and then we can't touch it. Then Wakefield comes to us. They did all the legwork. They did a great job. Well, the guy there has put up hundreds of these bridges, and we couldn't find one bad thing to say about him. And then, he was a little grumpy when you see it once. But, but at the end of the day, you wanted a new bridge for years and years and years. You didn't get your brand-new arch that you wanted. We got one to cover over it because we weren't allowed to touch it, because it's on the registry. So, we go and do this, so we can get truck traffic and fire trucks and everything else to go back through there. And during this whole process, we finally get a new bridge, and you called DEP six times on that project. And every time it came down, nothing was wrong. And so, at this point, I don't feel putting it back to the road committee or anything else right now, it's kind of pointless. We will look into it. And we, the road commissioner should be looking into it. And, but when our Bridge Ranger comes down, we will have him go over everything for us and make sure that everything's A-OK. And if it's not, we're hoping, he was the second in the line, I think, in the state of Maine. He would know.
Well, the road committee will be included in that meeting?
At this point, Tom, I think the road commissioner can take care of this. This is his job. Where are we now, road committee?
Do you want to do the announcements and public comments first?
Yes. Yeah, we'll do the, yeah, we'll do the public comments. Any public comment? Even though we are kind of. Even though we kinda did public comment.
Yeah, I know.
No, no, it really is not a public comment, because they were just commenting on the issue, so.
Yeah, so we might have other comments.
Looks like we got one. Looks like we got one.
Okay, this is new to me, Tom, so. I'm out on my-
The brave new world.
Better not do pass here.
Public comment time.
Okay.
Robert Turner, resident of Acton. And I'm also part of this Square Pond Improvement Association, president. And this whole process, I, I agree that it is a, a town vote. Obviously, you're, you're voting money, it's important. And we've had ongoing, extensive conversations with the road committee and various parties. And the October selectmen's meeting, there was the Army Corps that came in. I believe it was the Army Corps that originally came up with the in-kind replacement option. And just wanna remind people that the permitting process is significantly different going through the in-kind replacement process. It's not as extensive as the, the other process. So, and at that meeting, there were three options. I looked at the RFP request that was dated in March of 2022 from Ransom, and the scope of work, I don't see where it discussed the three options. So I'm a little confused over what happened to the three options. We talked about the three options. Now, the ransom scope of work that I can see didn't reflect the three options. And just, I'm, just-
We can have Leslie, I think Leslie's looking right now.
Well, it is, yeah, so under Task Three Engineer Design, it says the design will be based on the stream smart design, the replacement crossing design will be one and a half by two. It references design singular, but it does, but it says Ransom will evaluate different structure types to select the most appropriate condition, so.
Well, one and a half, excuse me, but the one and a half only reflects if you rebuild the bridge from scratch and expand the size. If you do an in-kind replacement, you're not dealing with one.
And they're gonna give us three different options, and that's one of them.
And I think all he's, he's just saying that it doesn't say it in there.
The scope of work, I don't see what-
See, she's got-
I have an email from the engineer that I just, I just received where I talked about we were working on a sketch plan, the cost estimates, one plan being an in-kind replacement.
So that was-
It's just not in the contract.
But it's in your email.
Yep.
It's in, and here, I think it would cover this, where ransom will evaluate different structure types to select the most appropriate position for the site. So they, they've, they've left room there to, for different avenues, different possible avenues.
That's a lot less specific than what we had discussed. And the three types were the canal street option, which is interesting, the in-kind, and then an expanded box槽, that's, that's my point. The other thing I was gonna remind people, I believe, was that Spear has hired an engineering firm, and we offered to do a peer review of the recommendations from ransom engineer, purely a peer review. So it kinda provides some additional credence to the recommendations from that engineer.
At your cost?
At our cost.
Deal with that one, Tom, I don't know why you wouldn't.
That's probably at the end of the day, after we get, after we get it.
Once we get it, yeah.
We'll figure it out from there.
Absolutely. Good point.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
We gave you the-
I just found it over here.
Oh. Well, that's the sketch design.
On the canal?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Do you want that?
No. I already know what it looks like.
Sure you do.
Okay, any, any other public comment?
Okay.
Okay, Tom, you wanna read the announcements tonight?
Sure, why not? Thursday, June 2nd, Planning Board, 6 o'clock. Sunday, June 5th, Rec Committee at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday, June 8th, Select Board, 6 o'clock, Public Hearing, Iron Tail Saloon, Liquor License Renewal. Wednesday, June 15th, Select Board, 6 o'clock. Thursday, June 16th, Planning Board, 6 o'clock, Public Hearing, Kenyon Auto Repair Shop. Monday, June 20th, Conservation Forest, 6 p.m. Wednesday, June 22nd, Select Board, 6 o'clock. Monday, June 27th, Road Committee, 6 o'clock. Wednesday, June 29th, Select Board, 6 o'clock. Busy month.
And we'll, we will be advertising that the town hall will be closed on Town Meeting Day, the 18th, so. So Saturday, we're normally open.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we go into Executive Session 405-a, dash, 6A1, Personnel Treasurer Search.
Second. Hold favor.
Do I hear a motion?
Good, Dan? All right. Make a motion that we come out of Executive Session 405-dash, 6A1, Personnel Treasurer Search.
Second.
Hold in favor? Okay.
Six interviews set up for tomorrow night. All right, we're good with those.
And so, I like, we like to announce there that the next three Wednesdays of the month, this month here, the 8th, the 5th, no.
27.
Yeah, 27th, we will be closing the, the Test Collector's Office Registry there for, well, due to personnel, lack of personnel right now, the ladies in the office right now are having, have a lot of work ahead of them. And we're, we've gotta give them a day there to catch up, because we've got Town Meeting coming up. We've got all these, the election and all that, so.
The audit has to be done.
The audits.
Yeah, so there's a lot that needs to be done, and we're down about 25% or so work-wise, so we need to help them, so that they can get everything ready for the end of the year.
Yeah, so, you know, we, so after that, we'll be opening back up. Hopefully, we're, we're in search of our treasurer, and we just think that this is good for the upstairs there, so they can give them a breather, we better get some other stuff done.
Downstairs.
You know, we hope this isn't a inconvenience for the community, but it's really a necessity that this be done.
Yeah.
We can't abuse our staff. They're being asked to do a lot of extra things right now, at a time when the audit is gearing up, and we don't have a treasurer. And they're doing their best to sort of keep things afloat during this period. So I asked the community, you know, you're probably gonna find, the, the lines will be a little longer than normal. Just be patient, please, and, you know, understand that the staff are doing the best